A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of.
Silent prayer, petition. Thank you. Melody, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinky.
Here.
President Dawson.
Present. I'd like to remind everybody to turn your phones on silent or airplane mode and remind everybody to speak into the mic so they can be heard clearly for the recording. Can I get a motion for minutes of approval for July 7, 2025 council meeting?
Second.
Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Crabtree. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of July 9, 2025 special call council meeting?
Second.
Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Mishler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Presentations and introductions. Angie McKee has our outgoing council secretary.
I'm at the end of an era on Thursday of working full time. However, I am staying on part time for the entire month of August.
Tell us who you are.
Angie McKee, I'm the council secretary. But with me today, I have Natalie Mitchell. She is going to take over the part time job that Melody had as Melody transitions into my role on Friday. So I just wanted to introduce Natalie to the council and to the mayor.
Thank you.
She'll be with us starting, actually starting today.
Thank you. Welcome, Natalie. Anything you'd like to say? Okay, you sure?
I will say this, she comes to us with a ton of experience. She worked over at the courthouse for the county, so she worked over there.
Get used to that.
All right, thank you very much. You're welcome. Welcome. Unfinished business, reports of council committees. There are no reports of council committees. Ordinance on second, third reading. Melody, would you please re-propose ordinance 25-0-22 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-22. An ordinance appropriating $50,000 from the Lerner Theater for the Lerner 100-year anniversary celebration activities.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Mishler. Council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
We have a presentation on total cost and of the project. Presentation.
No, I do not have a presentation. However, we were here to answer any questions about the 100-year activities.
Like what is the budget for that 100-year celebration?
For the 100-year celebration? The total budget changes depending on how many donations that we've received. We've received donations from the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau, from the Friends of the Lerner, from the foundation, and have been receiving some sponsorships as well. But I don't have in front of me the total.
Right. But you have a working budget to work against to SARS donations? And what is that budget approximately?
We have, each individual event has different budgets. The 100-year committee is working with about $180,000. Of the Midland event is about $150,000, but I'd have to get back to you with the total.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, Visitors Convention Bureau is funded by a tax, and then our $50,000 is a tax. I'm just wondering what else is going to be involved? Are there any grants available to us at that same time?
So the total commitment from the city is $200,000. There was $50,000 last year appropriated, which we're asking to be re-appropriated today. There was $50,000 appropriated in 2025 plus $100,000 out of edit. And the total city commitment has not changed.
Hope the budget overall is?
More than that because of the donations.
Well, I would assume so, but what portion does the city represent? I guess is what.
Yes, $200,000. You're welcome.
David, I might add that the Elkhart County Convention and Bureau is our lead sponsor, and they've committed, I want to say 100?
Yes.
$100,000 to that. And we continue, I'm a member of the committee, and we continue to get sponsors. Oh, there's going to be a big event later on in the year, so I would say our, just roughly, our portion is probably about 50%. About 50% from the city, so I would, yeah. That's a rough estimate. Thank you. Mr. Fish, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make sure she got it.
Oh, thank you. I'm Megan Irwin, Chief of Staff for the City of Elkhart.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'll open up the public. Is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this? Please come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Ralph Spelbrink. I live on Bank Street. That's the block that Senator Barack Obama visited the first Sunday of May in 2008. I found a couple of books by the Lerner Publishing Company. One is What's Great About Indiana, and the other one is just titled Indiana.
Thank you. Mr. Spelbrink, yes, if you would give those her, we could pass them. We'll pass those on to the committee. They could probably use those. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any further council discussion? Seeing none. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
I got a motion for Mr. Mishler, got a second for Mr. Fish for third and final. Angie, would you, Melody, would you read proposed title?
Councilman Holt.
By title and do a roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Proposed ordinance 25-0-22. An ordinance appropriating $50,000 from the Lerner Theater for the Lerner 100-year anniversary celebration activities. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson. Passage nine to zero.
Okay. There are no ordinance and resolutions referred to committee, no table ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance on first reading, would you please read proposed ordinance 25-0-23 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-23. An ordinance appropriating $364,860.10 from the Cumulative Fire Equipment and Police Fund to pay the balance on the lease purchase agreement for the Rescue One apparatus for Elkhart Fire Department.
Thank you. If there are no objections to this ordinance, we'll go on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-24 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-24. An ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone 3.38 acres of vacant land at the southwest corner of County Road 17 and Middlebury Street in the City of Elkhart, Indiana, Form R-1, one-family dwelling district to planned unit development, PUD, B-3, service business district standards.
But no objections, can I get a motion in a second? But no objections, I'll pass this on to second reading. Proposed ordinance, proposed resolution 25-R-15, would you read it by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-R-35. A resolution of the common council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, waiving noncompliance with the requirement for the timely filing of an annual statement of compliance with statement of benefits form, Form CF-1/PP, and finding Treadit Tire and Wheel Company Incorporated to be in substantial compliance with statement of benefits and memorandum of agreement.
Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this resolution?
Oh, move.
Motion by Mr. Hines, second by Mr. Fish. Drew.
Good evening, council. Drew Wines, Economic Development. Treadit Tire's 2024 CF-1 was part of the recently completed compliance process. In 2018, the common council approved a five-year personal property tax phase-in. Treadit's statement of benefits estimated an investment of $4,400,000 in manufacturing equipment. Treadit received ERA extensions in 2021 and 2022. A significant part of their investment was held overseas and cannot be delivered and installed. The ERA extensions create a five-year layer on the new equipment that was installed in 2022. In spring '24, Treadit submitted a CF-1 that was not reviewed. City staff incorrectly determined the five-year phase-in had expired. Treadit Tire appealed this. We revisited the issue, and we determined the five-year layer on the new equipment is aligned with the application SB1 and ERA extensions granted, or excuse me, approved by city council. On July 9, council found Treadit was in compliance with their statement of benefits. The final step in approving their 2024 CF-1 is a waiver of noncompliance. This resolution will allow them to receive the benefit they would have received in 2024, pay 2025, in 2028, pay 2029. CF-1 submission in 2028 is required to receive the benefit. Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Hinky.
Hey, when was the equipment actually placed at the facility?
In 2022. So that's what created the five-year layer. When they received the ERA extension during CF-1 compliance 2022, then installed it later in the year, that created the five-year layer.
And then the expected expiration date of their investment?
That will be 2027, pay 2028. That will be, that will be the final year that they're eligible to turn in a CF-1 and receive a deduction.
So are you telling me though they're not done with, they're yet to spend more investment money?
They have completed their project. The last, the last year they were eligible to install equipment was, it was December 31, 2022, was their deadline to install equipment.
And then they were granted what extensions? You said '21 and '22, and then '24. So what were the extensions?
So 2022 was the last year they received an extension, and that extension just, you know, in 2021, it's my understanding, they had equipment overseas, and then they were still in the same situation in 2022. And each year, we granted them an extension just till the end of the year to install the equipment. And so once they did install the equipment, they received a five-year layer on, they are eligible for five years, you know, five-year deduction on that equipment they installed in 2022.
So how did staff mix that date? How did we not get that correct? Is that because there was a correction and we didn't play that forward?
We were aware of the five-year, we were made aware of the five-year layer in 2024 when they turned in a CF-1. We discussed it with county offices, we discussed it internally, and then concluded that the intent of those resolution, of the extension resolutions was to get them, you know, get them through and get them compliant, but not to grant a five-year, a five-year layer. That's where, that's where we landed last year in 2024. But this year in 2025, Treadit Tire appealed, and we concluded that, you know, this was a very significant investment, and the SB1 and application that were approved by council, you know, what did cite $4,400,000 in personal property equipment, and that's, you know, they exceeded that. And we concluded that their, that ERA extension, them receiving the deduction on, on that equipment that was installed in 2022 is aligned with what was approved by council.
So I just have a couple more. So based on what the CF-1 said, they had personal and real property?
Just personal.
Just personal. And so based on the original calculation, what was their compliance on the SB1 in '24?
They, I would have to double check. They, they, they were, I believe, it was $5 million, it was over $5 million is what they invested. They said they were going to invest $4.4 million, and I believe is around $5.8. So they greatly exceeded their investment.
And so they did not receive a tax credit of any form prior to this particular investment of '22?
They, they did receive, they did receive deductions. Every, you know, every time council approves a CF-1, a company, a company is receiving a deduction, they installed, I believe it was a million dollars worth of equipment initially, in the initial stages of their process, or of their project, I should say. And they did receive deduction on that. And so that was one layer. That, that began one five-year layer, and then, and then once the project was complete in 2022, they received that additional five-year layer.
So how comfortable are you that we are tracking the actual layers?
We track these very, very diligently with the Otter's Office, and we, last year we were aware, we were aware of this, and this year, we, we, last year we landed in one place, and then this year the company appealed, and we reviewed the issue and we landed at a different place. This is, so, you know, we, we have a shared spreadsheet with the Otter's Office, and we are certainly on the same page with them. And, and we are happy to provide, you know, so that information to council about specific companies, layered phases, if you're curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Any more questions for Drew? Seeing none, thank you, Drew. I'll open up to the public. Is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floors. Any other council discussion? Seeing none. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you please read proposed resolution 25-R-36 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 25-R-36, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, adopting the master plan for the Department of Parks and Recreation of the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
I get a motion and a second. Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler. Counsel discussion. Mishler.
Yes, I took the time this weekend to read the document and I have to say that they did a fantastic job. It was a very thorough assessment of our current park system as well as a detailed plan for the future of it. And I have to say, it was very impressive and I look forward to our community utilizing it the best way we can moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
So with all the planning, and I realize, you know, you're planning in advance, trying to work forward a 10-year plan, I just wanted to see the impact of SB1 and what that would do to the plans that are in place and would roll over to the following years. I'm, I'm guessing that's a average $5 million loss?
David, I could, I could say that, and I don't know if the email went out today, that we're going to be, have a finance committee of the whole with Baker Tilly to address just that issue. It's like, what does that look like for us going forward? So I think that'll help us better to make that determination after we've had that conversation with those guys.
It will help us, however, we're voting on this tonight. So this is a resolution. I get that that's, that's not financially, but I just want to make sure that feasibly we can cover what we're saying we're going to do in light of SB1.
And I, David, I would say to you, if, if we can't cover it, we're not going to do it. I think that's, I think that's.
I think the council should take a pay cut.
Yeah, yeah, we should, yeah. So, okay. At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this resolution?
Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. Any further council discussion? Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Other new business, we need to reappoint Ann Lily to the Historic, Culture and Preservation Commission. She has agreed to serve. So if I, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Ann Lily to the, to the Historic and Cultural Preservation Commission.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holtz, second by Mr. Fish. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Reports, Mayor Board of Works, whoever.
We could do other, new business?
Yeah, we did that. We got a couple, okay. No, Sess, okay, new business. Any new business? Mr. Fish.
Thank you. Just like to read a couple of things about the Railroad Museum. It's hopping and popping down there at the south end of Main Street. On Tuesday, July 15th, the National New York Central Railroad Museum hosted the National Railway Historical Society. The NRHS is a nonprofit group that supports train, railway and station preservation projects with hundreds of thousands of dollars awarded in heritage grants as well as education, photographic archives, events, publishing, standards definition and shared resources. 130 NRHS members with three chartered buses dropped in for a tour of the museum exhibits and grounds after touring the Adams and Westlake, Adlake facility. The NIBCO Century Flyer was also put into service and provided rides to willing guests. The group ate lunch in the large event space, which was followed by a media presentation by Joffrey Cracker, Craker, I think is his pronunciation, Mechanical Operations Director of, for the Norfolk Southern Elkhart Yard. A tour of the yard followed the presentation. The gift shop was busy for several hours as our guests seemed excited to take home a few souvenirs and paid admissions, et cetera. On a side note, the Conrail Historical Society will be holding their quarterly music, meeting at the museum on October 10th, 2026 with a similar agenda. This will particularly coincide with the beginning celebration of 175 years of railroads in Elkhart, which was on October 3rd, 1851. Elkhart's rich and extensive railroad history continues to draw railroad enthusiasts to our downtown area. The National New York Central Railroad Museum is proud to be a part of Elkhart's railroad history and heritage. And I'd like to say that's respectfully submitted from Brent Holloway, our executive director of the National New York Central Railroad Museum. One other note. Progress continues on Phase Two of the NIBCO Century Flyer Project. This project will include a total rebuild of the last car of the train, the observation style car, an extension of the metal storage shed, a wooden timber frame facade on both ends of the shed, and additional landscaping. The shed was recently completed as volunteers, one of, one of the volunteers was me, from the Friends Organization, and we laid the necessary foundation work on July 12th. Thanks to Buildings and Grounds and Street Departments and the mayor's office for helping coordinate some of those things. A and R Fabricating completed the extension on Tuesday, July 22nd. Central Garage will be, will begin work as soon, will begin work soon on the rebuild of the car. It's going to be quite a project. The $18,000 project is funded by the Friends of the New York Railroad Museum through a generous gift from the Rex and Alice A. Martin Foundation. So please come down and check out what's happening, the new things that we've built and I've even got pictures to show you if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky.
I'll try to cover this faster. Walnut Trails, we've been in conversation with them in regards to private roads. Eric Trotter has been very helpful, but they're wondering what steps need to be taken to make their streets public for public services and at what cost? And I don't have an answer for that, but that would be Walnut Trail condominiums. And then Bristol Street interruptions, you know, this is going to be an ongoing thing, but the backed up traffic was past the Gene Wood Light. And I'm just wondering what else we can do as far as directing traffic through the area. At that same time, we have a huge volume of cars now on Gene Wood Drive, being mindful of the closure. Sometimes it's difficult trying to get to the south side of town from the north side because we have too many roads that are impacted by improvements. Speed on Cassopolis Street was also a concern called in. I know the chief is back there, he's got that covered. And then I would like to see, and we've not talked about, and commonly we don't, talk about our Elkhart City Crime Reports. I think we get some conversation statistically, but I think I would like to see more as things go. We get a lot out of the newspaper, but it can be misinterpreted. So I'd like to get it from inside the department. And then I know Baker Tilly will give us a report financially and what cash position we are in. I think that's a pretty critical element at this time. I need to have an understanding of the latest laws on golf carts and scooters on the roadway. I don't know if we ever took a vote on that issue.
No.
Because we're seeing more golf carts, at least on the north side, and people now are walking their dogs, using their golf carts while their dogs walk and, I don't, I'm not going to say a word. And then I know we are well past our date for council review of prevailing ambulance rates. So we need to have that meeting at some point and talk about prevailing rates. Based on our ordinances, it's supposed to be annual.
All I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything? Seeing none. Report of Mayor, Board of Works, Board of Safety, Chief of Staff.
Megan Irwin, Chief of Staff. I just wanted to introduce our new 3-1-1 coordinator, Hugo Madrigal. He comes to us with two years under his belt in our permits department, which is going to be a huge asset for jumping into 3-1-1. He's already utilized the system. He's extremely bright, has a great reputation and we're very happy to have him. And I'm sure you'll all be getting to know him very soon. So thank you.
Welcome, Hugo.
Welcome.
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 Good evening, council. The, I want to remind everyone that Friday, we kick out our, kick off our Elkhart Grand Prix. So we hope to see all of you in and around. Thanks for nodding, Ian. I guess you like cart races, right? All right. Well, we will, they will be kicking that off on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I want to thank Buildings and Grounds. I want to, I want to thank Christie at the Fire Department for working closely with them to outline the course, make it safe and ensure that everyone has a lot of fun. So remember, Elkhart Grand Prix. And I also would like to mention as well, since you probably will hear it soon, that the AIM has an affiliate called ICOM, which is the Indiana Conference of Mayors. And we are hosting about 45 to 50 mayors this, starting this Wednesday for workshops, tours and to come up and see the city. And so I am the president of ICOM this year. Last year, we were in Madison, which is probably, it is the southernmost city. We were right on the Kentucky, or the Ohio River. And so they will be in and around visiting our amenities and sites and, and staff will be helping show them and explain to them the history of Elkhart and the wonderful things that are happening here. I'd also like to invite the council. I'd like to invite the council to the rooftop on the, it's called the rooftop, you know, rooftop?
Which rooftop? We have two now.
There's two now?
Yeah.
The first one. Which, which one should I call it? Yes.
Jackson Rooftop and Elkhart Hotel.
Which, which one? Wait a minute. Hainaut. No, Hainaut is on the Elkhart Hotel. Now, I'm talking about the Jackson Place Rooftop. And that will be Thursday. I will say that about 8:00, 8:30, we'll, we'll have most of those mayors there. And you'll get a chance to meet them and talk to them a little bit about their cities as well.
Would you send us out an invite so we can?
I will.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I will. I'll make sure one gets out.
AM or PM?
It's the rooftop, Brent. It's PM. That would be PM?
I'll have to drink this with coffee.
That would be.
You can have coffee too, Brent.
That would be PM, Brent, if you would. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, council. Dan Milleney, Chief, Elkhart Police Department. Just wanted to invite the council and remind you that on August 5th, Tuesday, August 5th, is going to be our Night Out Against Crime. So just wanted to invite you to that. It's between 5:00 and 6:00 at the Central Green. It's a great time to come out and we have about 40 partners, different members of the community, organizations that come out and support that. So it's a great place not only for the community to come to interact with our police department and our police officers, but it's also a great place to come for resources and kind of putting everything under, or everything in one spot. So that'll be a good time. And again, that's the 5th, Tuesday, the 5th, between 5:00 and 6:00.
Thank you, Chief. Any other reports from any department heads?
Good evening, council. Jameson Zarnicki, Park Superintendent. Just want to say, first off, thank you for approving the master plan. That's helpful. We appreciate that. Second, this Wednesday is the Art Walk. It's our second one in the series, 5:00 to 8:00 PM downtown Elkhart. We've got about 20 artists and over 15 businesses participating. And then we are offering something new this year. The Art Walk After Hours will be 8:00 to 10:00 PM at our place on Main this month. So it's the last Wednesday of the month. We hope you guys come out. Thanks.
Jameson. Any other reports of department heads? I just have a request of Chief Summers is that I can get into my garage doing a great race? That's, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none. Neighborhood Association reports. Latonya.
Also too, Tuesday, the municipal band is going to be, is it at 8 o'clock?
Yeah. Tuesday, municipal band for all of, we were invited to be recognized at 8 o'clock. So. Yes, Tuesday at 8:00. This Tuesday, municipal band.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're selling pies or not, but, but.
Dollars a slice?
Yeah, but, yeah. Latonya.
I want to thank Hugo and Daniela. With me.
It won't be, it won't be your last experience with her.
So thank you too for helping me and Megan and staff. So it was, it was really nice. I want to thank Brenda Kyle, who hosted the neighborhood cleanup. And a shout out to Darnell Thomas, who loaned us his lawnmower to mow. So thank you so much. We also had vegetables from Church Community Services and water from Faith Mission. So we appreciate it.
This happened in the 5th district or the 6th district?
Uh, 6.
Oh, 6 district. Mr. Curry.
The 5th district, we, we kind of playing catch-up, but we will be having a meeting this Sunday at 5:00 PM. It'll be one of our outdoor meetings where we meet on the green space right there at Hawthorne Drive in Dine Heart. And we'll be discussing our neighborhood cleanup and our neighborhood upcoming picnic. Y'all welcome to come.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any more neighborhood reports? Seeing none. I'll open up to the public for privilege of the floors. Anything that was not on the agenda that you would like to speak to?
Ralph Spellbringer, again, it looks like we're going to have good weather for the Grand Prix this weekend. I'd like to note that my temperature during these hot temperatures has been running two degrees higher than it was in April. That's something Councilman Mishler might find interesting. And at the first meeting of the month, I mentioned I thought Mishel Walker was a comparable city. So I have a copy of the legal ad from the South Bend Tribune for 2024.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Gabrianna Grotzl. I want to take a moment and invite you all to Progress Fest. It's going to be in the Central Green Downtown. It's going to be August 9th from 11:00 to 3:00. Just a quick, a quick description. Progress Fest is a crowdfunded, community organized event focused on bringing together neighbors who want to grow and develop our communities through political engagement, charitable services, establishing mutual aid services and strengthening our civic defenses through cooperation and organization. Your family can come and enjoy listening to speakers from around the state, local musicians and other entertainment on the impressive stage in the Central Green Park. Meet our organizations who are doing great work in our area and find one to get connected to as well as meet local and state candidates and hear about their experiences running for office and maybe you can learn how to run too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A flyer or webpage or anything?
What you did, I think you sent all of us an email?
I definitely sent you one.
Okay. Okay, I can forward, I can forward that to everybody.
Could you, could you please sign in?
Thank you.
Sign in. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, scheduling of committee meetings. Okay. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings. There will be a joint work session with the city council and the planning commission on Wednesday, July thirtieth, from three to five. Also, on the sixth of August, we'll have a finance committee of the whole with Baker and Tilly from five to seven. So you want to put those on your calendar. Excesses of communications?
So moved.
Got motion by Mr. Crabtree?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish, that we accept communications. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Got moved by Mr. Fish, second by Ms. King. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.